of the Superior Township Board of Trustees. We are using the Zoom webinar platform. For members of the public who have joined us by video or phone, your microphones are muted, but will be opened when appropriate. In order to minimize disruptions to the meeting and connectivity problems, only members of the board, applicants and staff will have video access. Upon, uh, okay, all chat and all chatting questions and answer boxes have been disabled. The meeting is being held by a video conference in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. All members of the public body and members of the public participating electronically will be considered present at the meeting and may participate as if physically present at the meeting. All the members of the board are participating from Superior Township. And if any member of the board is not participating from Superior Township, they must state from where they are participating. There will be an opportunity for the public to speak during public comments. If at any, if at any and during public comment periods, excuse me. And at the public comment period time, I have to make another announcement about how public comments will be handled. So for members of the board, are we all participating from Superior Township? I am participating.
Yes, yes, we are.
Yes, and I got a call from Lisa Lewis. She said she is on the call.
Okay, Lisa Lewis is on the call. All right, so we have, we have a full board.
Yes.
All right, so can I get a motion on the agenda?
So move.
All right, there any changes to the agenda? Saying none, all in favor approving the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so we're going to move into public comments and I have to read this script for public comments. And then we can take public comments and we're limiting public comments to three minutes per person. We're also going to have a public comment of limit of three minutes per person at the end of the meeting. And in the interest of economy, well, I'll public comment to go on. If I feel that in the beginning it's going on too long and is diminishing the value of the meeting, I'm going to just put it on a pause. We're going to have the presentations and we'll continue the public comments after the business of the board is completed. At this, at this time, we will open up the meeting for public comment. We'll start with fine participants. You can indicate that you would like to provide a comment by clicking the raise your hand button found at the bottom of your screen. If joining by computer or the top of your screen, if joining by tablet, your microphone will be enabled one at a time until all online participants have had an opportunity to speak once. When you are unmuted by the host, you will see a dialogue box that says stay muted or unmute yourself. Use unmute yourself if you wish to speak. Secondly, anyone who has phoned in will have an opportunity to speak. I will ask for callers to rate speak by raising their hands by pressing star nine and then they press star six to unmute. Callers must take turns until each call wishing to speak has had an opportunity to speak once. Comments must be limited to three minutes. If a participant's comments results in disruptive behavior, the Open Meetings Act allows for a person to be excluded from the meeting for a quote breach of the peace actually committed during the meeting unquote. I will first ask the host to mute you if you are engaging in disruptive behavior. If you continue with disruptive behavior, I will give you a warning that your behavior must cease or you will be removed from the meeting. If the behavior continues, I will ask the host to remove you from the meeting. So that concludes the remarks that I require to make. Ben, is there anybody who has raised their hand that'd like to make a public comment?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Plato has his hand raised. He is one of the panelists. I don't know if you want to start with him or actually go to the attendees.
Well, Ed, do you have a question?
No, if I have my hand raised, it's by accident. I'm not sure what that would happen, but.
Okay, okay.
Michelle McIntyre.
Michelle, would you state your name and where you live, please, then make your comment?
Good afternoon, everyone. This is Michelle McIntyre. I'm a resident here of Superior Township, Woodside Village subdivision. I just wanted to comment on the Salem sewer application. My husband and my two children and I have lived in the township for 11 years. Our family's physical and mental health are dramatically improved by the access that we have to the natural spaces here in the township. Specifically, the Superior Greenway, which is adjacent to the area proposed for the invasion of this infrastructure. The areas that, the areas that we rely on for our, I'm sorry. The areas that we rely on for our well-being would be forever changed because of the disruption to the natural and agricultural areas as a result of this sewer. And I wholeheartedly oppose the project, the Salem sewer project. I urge all trustees to oppose the project, deny the application, and take all measures to prevent it from being forced upon the residents of this township.
Thank you, Michelle. Ben, is there anyone else who has raised their hand?
Susan Ruth Rosegrant.
Susan, you have the floor. Would you state your name and where you live, please?
Hi, yeah, my name is Susan Rosegrant. I live in Superior Township on Prospect Road. I teach at the University of Michigan in Ann Arbor. But my husband and I moved to Superior Township in 2012 because we wanted to live in a community that really values open spaces and that thinks hard before putting up another residential development. The same open spaces and thoughtful planning are what's kept us here and given us such a strong sense of connection to our community. I'm a birder and depending on the season, I'm watching for birds on Gottfridson North of Geddes several times a week. This is an area that would be torn up and disrupted by the Salem Township Sewage Project. I'm not alone in caring about this stretch of land. Birders come from across the area, even across the state, to see the special and often rare species that are here. These are people who stop for food on Plymouth Road, eat at restaurants in Ipsy, or swing by Superior Farm and Garden for seed. Protecting our fields and woods and keeping Superior Township green benefits residents, businesses, the county, and beyond. It's my hope that Superior Township will fight this sewage project by all means necessary. Salem Township doesn't have the right to force a project on us that disrupts our land and negates our policies. This really matters to the township and its residents, and we won't accept this attack on our master plan and on our autonomy. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Ben, do we have anyone else who has raised their hand?
Bill Seacrest.
Bill, you have the floor. Will you please state your full name and where you live?
Yeah, my name is Willie Seacrest. I live on Cherry Hill Road, just half a mile east of Prospect. My beautiful wife Misty and I have lived out here at Stray Dog Farm for over 30 years, maybe 33 years. And we relish the opportunity to be a gap between the converging metroplex of Southeast Michigan. My, my, I taught in a college for 30 or 40 years and every semester, one of the things that I taught our students or shared with the students is the fact that we were engaged in the sixth great extinction of life on earth. It's being caused by the disappearance of habitat for the animals and plants and other forms of life which have to have a place to live. So we've been doing everything we can here in Superior Township to preserve Mother Nature instead of selling it. And we owe it to our children and our grandchildren and as well as current residents to preserve some open space without paving everything. So I urge the trustees and our board to do everything we can to turn back this assault on not just our neighborhood, but on our planet. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Ben, is there anyone else?
David Zalise.
David, you have the floor. Would you give us your full name and where you live?
Yes, my name is David Zalise. I'm a third generation township farmer. I live on Gottfridson Road in the proposed area of the sewer. And I would like to say that, you know, first off, we have been here since 1942. And provided that the sewer doesn't go through and we're not adversely affected, I would like to see the farm turn into a centennial farm. However, I am against the proposed sewer and ask the township board that they deny the permit. Let me start by saying this project is not welcome and is counter to what we, the citizens, have determined for ourselves for well over 30 years now. If the sewer passes through on the proposed alignment, it will inevitably usher in more legal challenges, likely bringing subdivisions and higher density development than we've wanted, anticipated, or planned for. Since word of the proposed sewer was leaked, Superior Township has repeatedly told the developer in Salem Township no to this proposal. Instead of continuing to be disrespectful and contentious, they need to find a different solution. Perhaps the developer should get the municipality that he's getting the water from to also take the sewage. It seems simple enough. Let me state for the record, for the township board, for any future litigants and for any future court proceedings, that the fact of the matter is the developer has already invested heavily in running water mains and underground infrastructure without first securing permission and all approvals for required utilities. One of the likely arguments the developer is planning to use in any litigation is that he cannot turn a reasonable profit on his investment without getting his way on the sewer. Again, he and Salem Township have been repeatedly told no prior to the bulk of this work. He invested the money without approval and while being told no. This argument should be disqualified if it is brought up and it is not the responsibility of Superior Township or its citizenry to guarantee a profit to any such entity. These actions speak volumes. It shows the plans to force a sewer down Gottfridson Road or through Superior Township are premeditated. Let's stop right here. That's right, premeditated. Yes, this is a term referring to criminal intent and yes, this is a criminal action. The entity forcing the sewer through is showing total disregard for citizens and officials of the neighboring municipality regardless of laws or the rights of those affected. How I understand it, the way we got here was that the developer wanted to build a local municipal sewage treatment facility near the development. It would have been a shovel-ready project that would have received funding from the Obama administration during the Great Recession. Due to that municipality dropping the ball and a lot of legal ugliness following, we now find ourselves at this meeting and dealing with the consequences that follow. The developer received a couple of grants from our state tax dollars from the legislature arguably through partisan political favor. This should never have occurred.
All right, so David, I, you've reached your three minutes. Can you wrap it up in 10 seconds?
Not in 10 seconds.
Would you comment then at the end of the meeting?
Okay.
All right, thank you. Ben, do we have anyone else who wants to speak? Reg Baker. All right, Reg, you have the floor. Would you give us your name and where you live?
Thank you, Ken. I live in Mathi Farm, just off of Gale Road. And I have a statement I'd like to read from the Mathi Farm Condominium Association Board of Directors on this issue. Mathi Farm is a residential community of 66 homesites on approximately 100 acres along Gale Road in Superior Township. The development was founded by Fred Mathi in 1988. One of our core values is the preservation and enhancement of the native landscape, both within our development and in surrounding township. We are in total agreement with the philosophy expressed in the Superior Township Master Plan, a growth management plan emphasizing sustainability, preservation of agricultural land and open space, provision of recreational opportunities for residents, maintenance of the visual character of a natural and rural landscape, and resistance to urban sprawl. The proposed pipeline along Gottfridson Road threatens all of these values. It provides no value to township residents. It disregards a quarter century of responsible management of our land and resources. It seeks to deny us our right as residents to manage our own affairs. We oppose it in the strongest possible terms. With the full support of all of the residents of Mathi Farm, we urge the Board of Trustees to reject the proposal and take whatever steps are necessary to defend such action. Mathi Farm Condominium Association.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Ben, is there another citizen that'd like to comment?
Mary Wydell.
Mr. Wydell, you have the floor. Would you state your full name and where you live?
Hi, this is Mary Wydell. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. I am a Plymouth Township resident. I am in Country Club Village, which is just to the east of this development. And I've been a member of the HOA board here for 11 years and have been a resident for 16. And I'm concerned about what this development and the placement of the new sewer will do and how it will change the communities. I commend Superior Township for the value that you place on the environment and open space and parks. It's, it's something I share and, and value also with you. I, I'm concerned with the change that this sewage availability will cause to the area, especially for the Superior Township residents. A boom in development and permanent change will be what results, what results from this, from the new sewer being put in and if allowed. Land cannot be created. Once allowed, this development will further spur more subdivisions and more change within your township so that you become more like a Canton Township or a Plymouth Township. And I don't see that as, as what your residents value and hopefully that you see that, you know, we value this to even being your neighbors.
Thank you, Mary. Ben, is there another person that'd like to speak?
Just says Bill.
Bill, you have the floor. Would you state your name and where you live, please?
Oh yeah, my name is Bill Shakora. I live in Mathi Farm, near Reg Baker who spoke earlier. I had a couple of comments, one about the proposal I saw in the press, Ken, about possibly connecting this sewer to the Western Township Utility Authority. I wonder if there, you know, and the argument was they don't have enough capacity. I looked at their website. There's a document on the website called the Continuing Disclosure Requirements Document. And according to that document, back in 2011, the system treated 6.1 billion gallons of wastewater. And, and that was in 2011. The last three years, it's been down to 5.1 billion, 5.3 billion, 5.1 billion. So it seems like they have about 900 million gallons of capacity that they're not using now that they were using 10 years ago. And so I question whether the statement is still valid that they don't have capacity. The other point is I, I actually am an environmental lawyer. I used to represent the Detroit Water and Sewer Department. And I know for a fact that the, you know, Western Township Utilities Authority has the ability to divert sewage either to Detroit or to Ipsy Land. And they have signed a long-term contract that requires them to divert it to Ipsy Land, but my guess is the infrastructure is still there. So that if, if the sewage could get piped to that vicinity, my guess is the, the infrastructure exists to then connect it to the Detroit system. And that's something that, I don't know if that's been considered. My final comment actually has to do with the Drain Code. I don't know if this has been discussed, but section, see 422 of the Drain Code requires the Wasna County, great, the Wasna County Water Resources Commission to approve, anytime a sewer crosses a county drain, requires approval by the Wasna County Water Resources Commission. And I'm not sure if anyone's talked to those folks about whether they would approve this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Ben, is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Supervisor Heise.
Supervisor Heise, you have the floor.
Hi there, Ken. Can you hear me?
I can hear you fine. Thank you.
Hi, this is Supervisor Kurt Heisey, Plymouth Township. I'm calling on behalf of the 27,000 residents of Plymouth Township who have spoken through their elected officials in August of 2020, where our township board unanimously objected to the Salem Sewer Project. This will be a great detriment to our quality of life and property values in Plymouth Township for those residents of ours who live along the Napier Joy Road area. One of the major reasons why we're opposed to this is not only the diminishment in quality of life, but the fact that Salem Township does not have any of the police, fire, DPW, or other social infrastructure services that are needed to support a large-scale residential development like this. In essence, they will end up relying on Plymouth Township taxpayers or Canton Township taxpayers to cover for their lack of, of planning in this regard. We're also obviously opposed due to the fact that $20 million of taxpayer money, state taxpayer money is being used on this project, which Plymouth Township had no hand in acquiring or we would have certainly opposed it at that time if we had known about that, that grant to the developer. Finally, I do have to comment on a couple of comments that were just made regarding Watuwa. I am the chairman of the Watuwa Sewer Authority. We cannot pursue it to our bylaws. We do not allow any other community to join Watuwa without a unanimous consent of the three-member Watuwa Board. So that would be Plymouth Township, Canton Township, and Northville Township. I'm certainly opposed to any entry by Salem. I'm sure Canton would, and I would hope that Northville would as well. As far as the infrastructure still being there to tie into the Detroit system that no longer exists, we have separated ourselves fully from Wayne County and the Detroit Water and Sewer System. All of our flow goes to Yucca. None of it goes to Detroit. None of it will ever go to Detroit. We have legally binding contracts now with the county, Wayne County on that. Finally, we do have a need for additional capacity in, in the Watuwa system. We have a future development, especially in Canton. We have a large industrial project that will be going on for years along the five-mile corridor between Plymouth and Northville Townships. So we have, we will have need for that capacity. It's not like we have excess capacity that we can give or sell to somebody. So we, we certainly oppose it from, from that standpoint as well. In any event, Plymouth Township stands ready to support you. As you know, you have a resolution that we passed unanimously in August of 2020 opposed to this project. And if need be, if this ends up in court, please give us a call because we may want to join you in your efforts. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Supervisor. Ben, do we have another speaker?
That is it. It's your supervisor.
Okay, so we're going to close.
Actually, I, excuse me, there's been two more people that just raised their hand.
Okay.
Jan Berry.
Jan, would you please state your full name and where you live?
Okay, this is actually Jan Berry's husband. My name is John Copley. I've been a resident of Superior Township for 46 years. I served on the planning commission for 20 years. We have nothing to gain and everything to lose from this proposal. And I would just say that too many people have put too much time and effort and love into this township to preserve its rural character. And it would be criminal, I think, to give that away. I simply urge the board to reject the application for the proposed sewer.
Thank you, John. Ben, do you have someone else?
Andrew Dietling?
Andrew, would you?
Andrew Detling.
Would you state your name and where you live, please?
Andrew Detling. I'm a resident of Canton, Michigan, right next door. I've been birdwatching in Superior Township for over 20 years. And I've seen over 214 species of birds. And that's really unique in this area. Living in Canton, we basically develop every single last square of green space. And I would be, uh, it would be horrible to see Superior Township fall into the same pattern as Canton. So I would hope that you take all measures necessary to, to oppose this. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Andrew. Ben, are there any other people that would like to comment? Mary Emmerich. Mary, you have the floor. Would you state your full name and where you live?
Mary's muted.
Can you help her out, Ben?
Am I unmuted? Am I here? Yes, you are. Thank you. I'll die out soon. I'm a dinosaur with this stuff. Yeah, I just want to say that I have Plymouth Orchards here. And I think the biggest takeaway for me from the comments I've been listening to is I have been mildly involved with the conservancy and land put aside in this township. And the one thing I do when I travel or see anybody is talk about the tremendous effort that's gone in to keeping this township with its open spaces. And it seems like the longer we can hold it, the more comes on board to hold as a green space. It is a great disservice for all the years Phil Seacrest and all the people that have been involved in doing what has made this township so special be set aside and having this tremendous assault, as you've been saying, on the township. It's discredit for all the work and all the years for what everyone's been trying to do here. And I obviously oppose it. So, so I have to say.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay.
Ben, is there anyone else?
John Runamaki. Runamaki, thank you.
John, you have the floor. And would you just state your name and where you live?
It's always a challenge when people try to pronounce my name, so I think I'm going to change it to Smith. Nevertheless, I live in Mathi Farm on Gale Road, and we have lived here for about 30 years. What I wanted to do was remind the trustees, and I know you really don't need it, of the overwhelming support the development of Superior Township's Growth Management Plan has received in the past. I've worked with a couple of other townships in which the growth management plan or management plan process has been sort of mechanical, ho-hum stuff. But here in Superior Township, even though only 12 or 15 people thus far have spoken to you in opposition to the Salem Township application, the fact that it fundamentally conflicts with all of the goals set forth in our growth management plan should be considered as a statement by just about each and every resident of Superior Township. So there's a lot of people speaking to you here by way of the growth management plan. And I've been involved in a couple of iterations of that plan in Superior Township over the last 30 years. So there are many people who would absolutely and violently object to the Salem Township application being granted. You know, different townships have different goals. And if they want to have a concrete township, so be it, just not for us. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Ben, do we have anyone else in the on-deck circle?
Nobody else. That's your supervisor.
All right, at this time, I will close public comment and move to communications. I will ask the clerk, Lynette Finley. I know we have received some email communications. Would you like to read off, not the body of the message, but just who are the people who, who sent in the email communication? And I'd ask you that at the end of the meeting, would you scan those and send them to our attorney who can then distribute them as he sees fit?
Yes, I will, Supervisor Schwartz. We have several communications written. They're from Dan Ezekiel, John Runamaki, who just spoke, Daniel Mormon, Andrew Detling, who did speak, Anne Avarens, Janet Henshaw, Bernard Duckerbrook, and the statement from Mathi Farm Condominium Association, which I thought was powerful and would have read that one myself. So. and the statement from Mathi Farm Condominium Association, which I thought was powerful and would have read that one myself, so. I'd like to put all these communications in for the record, and I will send them to our attorney.
Okay, so let's get a motion to add those to the record. Can I get a motion from one of the trustees?
So moved, support.
Okay, so moved and supported that we add the written communications to the record, and Lynette will scan those and send those to Mr. Landry, who can then distribute them. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed, pass unanimously. All right. Thank you, Lynette. This moves us into the business. And so the process, how this is gonna work today, is that Salem Township, through their representatives, will be able to have up to 60 minutes to make a presentation to the board. At the conclusion of the 60 minutes, Superior Township will have 60 minutes to make a presentation to the board. After Superior Township concludes, there will be no rebuttal. And that will be essentially how the new business for this meeting, and the only business for this meeting, will be conducted. Once that is complete, the board will hopefully make a decision. We can either deny, approve, or we can table it. So Mr. Plato, I'm assuming you will be making the presentation to begin, and if so, you have the board. Salem has the, excuse me, Salem has the floor at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I can't remember when I've received a more welcome to a meeting than I just received from the public comment, but be that as it may. I do want to initially say and impress upon Superior Township that Salem Township really wants to be a good neighbor. And although we are here under unusual circumstances with the litigation pending between the two townships, Salem Township really does understand the concerns that have been raised, including those voiced today by the residents of wanting to keep the natural areas and the open areas. And Salem Township, with that in mind, is willing to do whatever it will take, whatever is necessary to eliminate those concerns. So let me give you just a little quick factual background. Some of this you already know, but for the sake of the residents in Superior that may not know this, Salem Township has set aside approximately 1,400 acres surrounding the M14 and Godfordsen Road interchange for residential and commercial development, which Salem has called its urban service district. Salem's master plan requires that that area be serviced by public water and public sanitary sewage disposal. Toward that end, as you know, the state of Michigan, through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, has awarded Salem Township $20 million in grant funds to assist Salem Township in providing public water and public sewer utilities to Salem's urban service district. The reason that money was provided by the Economic Development Corporation is to stimulate economic growth and development opportunities within Salem Township. The water utilities, with the assistance of the MEDC grants, Salem has acquired those, the public water service, to the Great Lakes Water Authority. And construction of the public water system is currently underway, and is expected to be completed in the fall of this year. With regard to the public sewer system, again, with the assistance of the MEDC grants, Salem Township has obtained a source for the public sewer service from Salem's urban service district to Ypsilanti Communities Utility Authority, or YCUA. For YCUA to accept the wastewater from Salem Township, it obviously requires running an underground sewer main in the county road commission public road right-of-way under Godfordsen Road from Salem Township through Superior Township to get to YCUA in Ypsilanti. Superior Township agrees in its own ordinances that local septic tanks, sewage disposal facilities, and onsite wastewater treatment plants within the township would be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the township. Over the past several years, Salem Township has investigated connecting the various alternative public disposal systems, including such potential services as Plymouth Township, as Supervisor Heisey's mentioned, Lion Township, the Western Township Utility Authority, Wayne County, and YCUA. The reports of those efforts were provided to Superior Township, and those reports included in the application that Salem Township has submitted to Superior. Because after those studies, it was determined that YCUA was the only viable alternative, on July 1st of 2017, Salem Township entered into a water transportation and treatment agreement with YCUA under which Salem Township reserved specific capacity at YCUA to treat wastewater from Salem Township. The reason that was done was because at the time, initially, Salem Township was told that there was not sufficient capacity at YCUA, but capacity then became available. So to make certain, because we knew these projects were gonna take several years, to make certain that capacity would be available, when the sewer system was completed, we entered into this contract with YCUA that allowed us to reserve a necessary capacity to serve Salem Township. One of the provisions in that agreement, which is important to keep in mind, is that Salem Township has the exclusive ownership and control of the wastewater transportation system, including the pipe running through Superior Township. And the contract with YCUA further provides that no other YCUA community member, including Superior Township, would be allowed to connect to Salem's transportation system without Salem Township's prior approval. Salem Township then, through its engineers, sought and obtained the necessary approvals and permits for Salem Township to connect its urban service district to YCUA in Ypsilanti specifically. On March 1st, 2019, the Washington County Road Commission issued a letter approving Salem Township's wastewater treatment plan, wastewater system plans, including that portion of the sewer main traversing Superior Township in the public right-of-way. Then on April 24th of 2019, the MDEQ, after an extensive review and discussion of Salem's proposed sewer system, MDEQ pursuant to the rigid state standards, issued its permit authorizing the construction of Salem Township's wastewater system and further authorizing the construction of an 18-inch diameter sewer force main to be run from Salem Township through Superior Township and to YCUA pursuant to the plans and specifications that were submitted by Salem Township's engineers. Accordingly, by May 19th, all the necessary governmental regulatory agencies had authorized the construction of Salem Township's sewer system running from Salem Township to YCUA, except for Superior Township. The proposed sewer lines from Salem Township in the Washington County right-of-way through Superior Township to Yucca have met all of the very rigid standards and have received the approval of Washington County, the state of Michigan, and the Ypsilanti Community Utilities Authority. These approvals from these regulatory agencies will protect both the environment and the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Superior Township. Superior Township and all the residents that spoke today and even non-residents have voiced concern that sometime in the future it may be possible for Superior Township landowners to sell their land to a developer who would then want to tap into the sewer line running from Salem Township through Superior to YCUA. That should not be a concern because Salem Township is willing to take, as I mentioned, any necessary steps to assure that Superior Township, to assure Superior Township that developers tapping into this sewer line can never happen. And I wanna outline the ways that Salem Township is willing to protect Superior Township, so that it's not gonna be a situation where that land is gonna be developed. It's not gonna be a situation where developers are gonna be able to tap in to that sewer line. First of all, Salem Township's contract with YCUA, as I mentioned, specifically states that no other entity besides Salem Township can use that sewer line. Secondly, the sewer line running through Superior Township in the county public right-of-way is a force main. It's not a gravity sewer. And while it's not impossible to tap into a force main, it would be very difficult for anyone to try and tap into that line. For those that don't understand what a force main is, it's a pipeline that conveys wastewater under pressure from a pump or compressor in Salem Township all the way to the discharge point at the YCUA treatment plant in Ypsilanti. Superior Township itself has similar force mains for sewage disposal that run through neighboring municipalities and connect with Yucca. So we are asking of Superior to do the same thing that Superior has asked other townships to do, and that is to allow us to run a sewer line through Superior Township so we can connect with YCUA. Third, the sewer pipe running through Superior Township has limited capacity. It's an 18-inch pipe which is specifically designed to only have enough capacity to serve Salem Township's urban service district and possibly the Salem Hamlet district. For anyone else to tap into that pipeline, it would obviously decrease the capacity needed to service Salem Township residents. And Salem Township would be foolish and is never going to deprive its own residents of sewer capacity for the sake of letting some developer in Superior Township tap into the line. So we have those three protections. Fourth, Salem Township will be the owner of the sewer line. And Salem Township, as set forth in our application, has agreed to enter into a contract with Superior Township whereby both townships would agree to never let any property owner outside of Salem Township tap into that sewer line. That would be a contract binding between the two townships, and either township would have a right to contractually enforce that contract in court. And lastly, even though all the reasons I just stated we believe would fully protect Superior Township from anyone tapping into that line, the parties have more recently discussed the added protection of entering into a consent judgment that would be enforceable by the parties and any environmental group or conservation group that wants to become a party to that, by which any property owner outside of Salem Township would be absolutely prohibited from tapping into that sewer line. And again, a consent judgment would be enforced by the court. If any party tried to breach that consent judgment, the court would have the ability to come in and prevent anyone else from using that sewer line. So that's an added protection on top of the contract, on top of the pipe capacity, on top of the fact that it's a force main. So we believe that all those items clearly would fully protect Superior Township and that development, because someone is able to tap into that line, would simply not be possible without all those protections in place. And that Superior Township and the residents of Superior Township should not be concerned that this sewer line is somehow going to cause development in those open areas and in those natural areas. We understand that Superior wants to protect those areas, and we agree that they should be protected. And that's why Salem is willing to work with Superior to do whatever is necessary to make sure that no development will come into that area. The last thing I want to address is that your engineers have asked why Salem Township does not build an onsite wastewater treatment plant instead of seeking to run a sewer pipe through Superior Township to YCUA. When Salem's engineers from Stan Tech first met with the state of Michigan, with MDEQ at that time, several years ago, to discuss the options for disposal of wastewater in Salem Township, the MDEQ insisted that it wanted Salem to connect to a regional public disposal system and not to have a local wastewater treatment plant. Using a regional facility like YCUA is the gold standard for wastewater disposal. Superior Township itself has force mains along Getty's Road running wastewater to YCUA. Utilization of a large-scale regional wastewater treatment facility, such as YCUA, is a generally accepted and superior solution to wastewater treatment from a public policy and environmental protection standpoint. Using a regional system like YCUA gives you the expertise to make sure that the wastewater can be treated and disposed of properly and safely, and to protect the environment. Salem Township and Superior Township both have nearly identical ordinances giving preference to utilization of YCUA over using individual wastewater treatment plants with their respective, within their respective townships. That's why we, the idea of a wastewater treatment, onsite wastewater treatment plant was abandoned. The state did not want it. It would obviously be something, if it were to be built, Salem Township would have to maintain at great expense. It's in the best interest of everyone to have simply a sewer line running underground that doesn't require a lot of maintenance. That's been approved by the state of Michigan under strict state regulations. That would be the best interest of both townships involved, we believe. And with that, I would like to turn this over to the engineers from HRC to explain what work they did to explore the possibility of other alternatives to Salem's wastewater disposal before it was determined that a sewer main through Superior Township was the only real feasible alternative. Melissa, are you available?
Mr. Plato, Melissa was not a panelist. Mr. Schwartz, would you like me to promote her to the panelist?
Yes. Yes.
Hello, Melissa Coda with Hubble Rock and Clark. I'm an associate for the company. Thank you, Plato, for the introduction, and also thank you board for the time to be able to explain some of the history of the sanitary sewer outlet. Back in around 2013, Hubble Rock and Clark, or kind of referred into the report, HRC, started investigating different sanitary sewer outlets for Salem Township's urban service district. Over approximately two years, from a year range of 2013 and 2015, HRC had discussions with multiple communities to see what could be a potential sanitary sewer outlet for Salem's Township Urban Service District. First entity that we did look at was at Lion Township. They currently have a wastewater treatment plant system. When the initial conversation happened around 2013 with Lion Township, they did not have any capacity available at their wastewater treatment plant. So that was not an option. The second option that was looked at was at Plymouth Township and doing a connection to Plymouth Township back in around 2013. At that timeframe, we were notified by Plymouth Township, there was no spare capacity in their sanitary sewer system to be able to have an outlet for Salem Township to Plymouth Township Sanitary Sewer. So that option was not available. Also, in that timeframe, around 2013, 2015 timeframe, we did make some initial conversations with the Western Township Utility Authority, which three members are Northville Township, Plymouth Township- Plymouth Township, and Canton Township. During that timeframe, during the initial conversations, they mentioned there wasn't any capacity to be available to be able to give to someone else, no surplus capacity. And also too, if there was any surplus capacity, they would probably have it reserved for the three members. And then also the discussion did happen, if another member was to join the Western Township Utility Authority, that all three members would have unanimously vote yes to be able to have another member. So with, under those circumstances, that was not a viable option to connect to that for the sanitary sewer outlet for Salem Township's Urban Service District. And then during that timeframe of 2013, we also did start to have discussions with Ypsilanti Community Authority to be able to connect the sanitary sewer to that location. With that, during that timeframe, they said they did have capacity of that, and so then additional discussions and additional progress was made with that community for YUCA to have a sanitary sewer outlet for Salem Township. I'll turn it to Brian Simmons with StanTech, their Salem Township's engineers, to be able to provide more information and more detailed design information that has occurred for Salem Township's utilities.
Supervisor Schwartz, I believe that Brian Simmons is also not listed as a panelist, but he just doesn't want to speak today.
Yeah, Ben, go ahead and allow this individual to present.
Yes, Supervisor, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'm Brian Simmons with StanTech Consulting. I just want to speak about the wastewater treatment plant evaluation. We looked at that when we kind of ran into a bit of a roadblock with the other scenarios to go regional. Our meetings with the state, as Mr. Plato pointed out, did talk about trying to go to a regional facility is the gold standard. But we did look at onsite treatment when that, when that door closed. We did eventually find out that Yucca had capacity, and so that's when we decided that route down to Yucca with the force main. And as Mr. Plato pointed out, we have obtained all permits, we have obtained drain crossing permits. Those will expire, we'll have to renew those, but we have had many discussions with the Drain Commission and other state agencies and County Road Commission and so forth. I think one of the items, or a few items that were brought up in, in your engineers' review letter, were concerns related to low-flow conditions at the beginning of development, and the ability to obtain scour velocity, to clean the pipe out, the ability to, well, concerns with construction, with bentonite during directional drilling, open cutting during installation of some of those structures on the force main. And we've also got our, one of our engineers, our design engineers, on the line available. If you could bring him in, Ish Niyek, he can speak to some of those concerns.
Ben, you can go ahead and connect this person as a panelist.
Good afternoon, Mr. Supervisor and the rest of the board members. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Ish, Ish Niyek. Yeah, I'm one of the engineers here. And a couple of things I'd like to mention, Mr. Plato, related to that, and I just want to emphasize it one more time, is that this, in fact, is a force main, which is, is not impossible, but difficult to cut into for a future tie-in. Your conventional gravity sewer has manhole roughly about 300 feet apart, so one can easily join there. In this case, there are very few structures that are on the force main, and they are primarily for two reasons. Number one, to allow a bypass pumping in case something happens, you know, you never know if there's any kind of a problem, so then that facility has been provided, which is kind of unusual in this case, but there is something that was required by Eagle, in this case, considering the somewhat unique nature of this. So it's an additional safety factor that has been designed. Another thing is that, is, the township engineer has brought up a point about low velocities in the initial phase of development, there will not be enough flow, and you need enough flow to keep the solids in suspension. So what are you going to do about that? Well, we have actually two systems to combat that situation. Number one is that we have actually hooked up a 12-inch water main on the, near the pump station. So that will be available roughly at a very high flow, almost 2,500 gallons per minute if you wanted that. What that does, it provides a very high velocity, so basically cleans the pipe. The velocity, normal velocity for, minimum velocity, for example, for the gravity sewer is two foot per second, to keep the solids in suspension. What we will be able to achieve is twice as much, four foot per second, for example. And then, so that is, as required, we will be able to use that facility to flush the main out. Another thing we have is so-called PIG. It's a, it's a kind of a, kind of a rudimentary term that has come into play, but it's basically a, almost like a big inflatable ball that you push through the sewer under the pressure of water. So basically, as it goes across, it spins and cleans the solids out. And we have a station for launching that kind of a device right at our pump station. So, so let's assume that we are not able to flush out the system with just water. That's a secondary thing that we have available for use. So in this whole profile, or the sewer system, force main system, has been reviewed by, has been gone through by Eagle in a fight to its home. Actually, we had three separate submittals every time there were some other issues that cropped up, and we addressed them. So I think we have, we are aware of some of the issues that will be there, the challenges as part of the solid deposition. However, we feel that we have enough backup and contingency measures in the system already designed to take care of. That's all I have right now. Unless somebody has questions.
Ed, does that conclude Salem's presentation?
Mr. Supervisor, that would conclude Township's presentation. I guess at this point, we would turn it over to representatives of Shell Stack or the developer to see if they want to make any presentation.
Yeah, I'm not going to take any additional part of your time, because I think Mr. Plato and the witnesses really, really have covered it. I do know, and I don't know if this got mentioned, that, you know, I know of the golden rule is a rule of law, but, you know, Superior really does the same thing we do, and I think with the same, with the same, and by we, I mean in Salem, with the same intentions of preserving open spaces and environmental protection, in that specifically Superior doesn't have its own wastewater treatment facilities, treats its facilities, treats its wastewater at Yucca, has some 40 miles of pipe, just like the pipe we're talking about having eight miles of, and transports its waste across to another municipality, which is really all we're asking. So I think that, you know, we have the same ordinances in Salem and Superior, and now we're asking to use the same system that Superior uses, which is to transport its waste to Yucca, through pipelines within, within the township, precisely what we're asking for. And there's a good reason, because Eagle and the state of Michigan, and I think it's incontestable that all the experts say, the best way to do this for the environment for everybody, as well as for wildlife and habitat, is to go to a regional system where there are economies of scale, there's a higher level of expertise that, that a treatment plant that's 100 times the size of a plant that would be in Salem is available to use, and it would be really crazy not to use it for the benefit of all of us. You build a wastewater treatment plant and expand it, and you use, you take away habitat, you use additional space to do that, and, you know, wildlife doesn't live just in one side of a township border. We share the same wildlife populations, and we don't want to expand our wastewater treatment plant for the detriment of our own natural resources. So Yucca really is the answer, and we hope that, we hope that you'll see that. Thanks.
Ed, do you have anyone else that you want to present?
No, that, that would conclude our presentation, but obviously any of us, if any of the board members have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Okay. And we're asked, does any of the Superior Township board members have any questions at this time?
No, I don't. No.
Okay, so I, I think that we don't have any questions at this point, so you only used 30 minutes and 51 seconds of your time, so we're going to turn it over to the Superior Township attorney, Mr. David Landry. So David, you have the floor now.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Township trustees, my name is David Landry. I represent Superior Township in a lawsuit that has been filed against Superior Township and the elected officials by Salem Township and the Salem Springs LLC, which is a Shell Stack-owned development. Salem Township and the corporate entity Salem Springs want to construct a sanitary sewer force main through Superior Township. To do that, they need your permission. You submitted an application, and today they're asking you to vote, make a decision, and grant them permission. First, I think it's important for the township trustees to understand the standard that you are to apply in making the decision today. And second, I think it's important for you to understand the analysis and conclusions of your experts as to the effect such a sanitary sewer force main would have on Superior Township. With respect to the standard that you are to apply, that standard is set forth in three places: in the Michigan Constitution, in Michigan statutory law, and in a Superior Township ordinance. And all three serve the same purpose. The Michigan Constitution, Article 7, Section 29, provides that no corporation, public or private, operating a public utility, shall have the right to use highways or streets of any township, or pipes or utility facilities, without the consent of the township. The right of all townships to the reasonable control of their highways and streets is reserved of the townships. Therefore, nobody can construct a sewer line through Superior Township without your consent, but you have to be reasonable when you control your highways. You have to be reasonable in making that decision. Michigan statute, MCL 247.183, provides that before one municipality may construct a utility through another municipality, they must first obtain the consent of the municipality through which they desire to construct the utility. Case law applying this statute provides that such consent cannot be refused arbitrarily or unreasonably. So just as the Constitution, the Michigan statute provides that if you are withholding consent, you cannot do it arbitrarily or unreasonably. Superior Township has its own ordinance, Section 169.85, commensurate with the Constitution and the state statutes. And it provides that sewage lines not owned or controlled by Superior Township, which exist solely to serve areas outside Superior Township, are prohibited unless a public health emergency exists and the proposed sewer line is the only feasible way to avert the public health emergency. Therefore, in making this decision today, you must base your decision on rationale reasons, and the applicant must convince you that the existence of a, there is an existence of a public health emergency, and this proposed sewage main through Superior Township is the only feasible way to avert that public health emergency. Now, why is this request being made? Well, Superior Township wants to increase development, sorry, Salem Township wants to increase development in Salem Township. So they've created an area called an urban service district, they've invited developers to come in and develop residential and commercial areas. Salem Springs LLC is one such corporate entity that has come into Salem Township, and they've agreed, they entered a planned unit development, a contract which would allow Salem Springs to develop in the urban service district. But that PUD agreement specifically provides that the township is not going to pay to bring water or sewer in. The PUD specifically requires the developer to pay for that. The PUD language says, quote, "Township would not be required to accept any risk relating to the financing to extend public utilities to the property. In such extension, must be, must bring public utilities to the township." So Salem Township has no financial obligation here. It's all up to Salem Springs LLC. If they want to develop in the urban service district, they have to pay to bring the water and the sewer in. So what are the reasons given by Salem and Salem Springs for this application? They claim a public health emergency does exist, and they claim that construction of the sewer pipe through the entire length of Superior Township is the only way to avert a public emergency. With Superior Township, what they've done is they've taken this application, and they've given it to the township's engineering consultant, OHM advisors, to review, and they've also retained a municipal planning expert, Mr. Chris Duzan from McKenna, to evaluate and advise the township. I would like to summarize for the members of the trustee board what the conclusions of these consultants are, and they are available if you have any questions. First, I'd like to deal with the planning review by McKenna. The first thing that's pointed out by your planning consultant is the scope of what's being proposed. Salem is not asking to put a sewer pipe through a corner of the township, or through a section or two of the township. They want to construct a sanitary force main through the entire length of Superior Township from the top to the bottom, through the heart of the agricultural area. Now, if I could share my screen, if I'm allowed to do that, they've disabled it. Can I possibly do a screen share, Mr.? it. Can I possibly do a screen share, Mr. Supervisor?
Of course. Ben, can you help him on that?
Mr. Landry should be able to share now.
Um, hmm, fuck. No, that's not working.
Mr. Landry, you should be able to share.
Uh, yeah. On that, um, well, it's not working right now, so I'm going to abandon this. Nope, that's not what I want. Stop screen sharing. Okay, let me just say this. The proposed route is along Gottfrithson Road. Gottfrithson Road runs right through the heart of the agricultural and rural open space area of Superior Township. So I would like to read for you the very first sentence from your planning consultant McKenna's report, and it says, quote, "As requested, I have analyzed the potential impacts the construction of a sanitary sewer line along Gottfrithson Road would have on the planning goals of Superior Charter Township. As explained in this letter, my research finds that the proposed construction would have serious consequences, thwarting the township's efforts to preserve and protect its agricultural land and rural open space," end of quote. "The proposed sewer main would pass through sensitive environmental areas with wetlands, streams, woods, and rural open spaces, and it would pass through vast prime agricultural lands occupied by huge productive farms." Superior Township's master plan describes its residents' visions for the future of the township, and the residents have indicated through that master plan that they want to retain a rural character at all but the southern edge of the township, with the bulk of population living in developed areas south of Geddes Road and the historic hamlet of Dixborough. Your master plan, Chapter 5, Objective 7, provides that the land north of Geddes Road outside of the hamlet of Dixborough shall be preserved, managed, or developed in a manner that focuses on long-term retention of agricultural operations, green spaces, and rural land use. McKenna has noted that Superior Township has been extraordinarily successful at implementing its master plan. Seventy-two point eight percent of the land in the township is maintained in rural land use. The township has been successful in keeping incompatible uses from infiltrating the rural heart of the community. You have eight nature preserves in your township. Your master plan recognizes the threats to agricultural land use, and the planner pointed out the three main threats to agricultural use. One, non-farm housing replacing active farms. Two, incompatibility of non-farm housing close to active agriculture. And three, increased property taxes, which burdens the farmers. A driver of all three of these threats is the extension of utilities, especially sanitary sewer. McKenna advises that, simply put, utilities result in urban development. This is called the utilities development cycle. And that cycle recognizes that the presence of utilities results in land speculation. The price of land goes up, making it more costly to farm. With higher land values, you have higher property taxes, which is an imposition on the farmers, and the farmers begin to sell. Developers buy the property and apply pressure to the municipality, including lawsuits, to allow access to utilities. McKenna cites examples from your neighbors. Scioto Township, utilities were extended from Ann Arbor. Land on the east side of the township filled with development. Lion Township constructed its own wastewater treatment plant and generalized widespread land speculation. Seemingly overnight, the township's rural character was transformed. McKenna concludes by saying, quote, "The prospects for agriculture and rural open space are grim if a sanitary sewer line is construed along constructed along Gottfrithson Road in Superior Township," end quote. McKenna also stated, "Recognizing the desires of its residents to maintain a rural character and the threat to that character, Superior Township has taken steps, even great pains, to preserve its rural agricultural areas." You have created your urban service area, and your master plan says it is not sound regional or community planning to encourage or permit the extension of public sanitary sewer outside the urban service area. Superior Township has taken steps to limit utilities in Superior Township to the area south of Geddes Road. Ironically, Salem Township's master plan says, quote, "Extension of public sewer services into designated agricultural zones shall be prohibited," end quote. That's what Salem's master plan says. McKenna comments, quote, "Salem Township recognizes the deleterious impact the utilities development cycle has on agricultural and rural open spaces. Nevertheless, Salem Township wants Superior Township to cast aside the same utilities and growth management strategy it has adopted and adhered to, just so Salem can develop its urban service district," end quote. McKenna analyzed your ordinance 169-85, which requires a public health emergency. They point out that the definition of emergency is a sudden, urgent, unexpected occurrence requiring immediate attention. Missed by Salem Township to provide sanitary service to its urban service district has been known for over a decade. It's not sudden, it's not urgent, it's not immediate. McKenna concludes that it is, quote, "by no means an emergency." If a public health emergency existed, Washington County Health Department and Eagle would be all over. They're not. So according to your planning consultant, from a planning perspective, you are being advised that to grant this application would be contrary to the desires of your residents, contrary to the provisions of your master plan, contrary to the strategies you have adopted and adhered to for years, and would have serious consequences thwarting the township's goals. You've also had this application reviewed by your engineering consultant, OHM advisor. They have reviewed the application, and they have seen there is no public health emergency. Anticipated future growth is not equate to a public health emergency. They have concluded that this proposed sewer force main through the entire length of Superior Township is not the only feasible means to provide sanitary sewer service to the Salem Urban Service District. Modifications can be made to the Salem Hamlet wastewater treatment plant. A wastewater treatment plant on the urban service district is feasible, and other outside sources are feasible. They first point out the potential construction, operation, and maintenance issues. Again, the scope of this proposal is fifty-two thousand linear feet. That's almost ten miles of eighteen-inch diameter force main pipe through your entire township. Now, what they've proposed is a trenchless installation. Well, that's true. It will be trenchless. However, open cuts will be required all along the route as this is installed, all along Gottfrithson Road. This system includes six air release valves, twenty-two combination bypass air release valves, thirty-three contingency bypass assemblies, staging pits for drilling and receiving pits, connection of the HDPE force main segments, and of course, instances of unanticipated utility conflicts, all which would require an open cut along Gottfrithson Road during the installation. It would not be completely trenchless. The size also creates significant operation and maintenance issues. The design size is three point three six million gallons per day. Now, the average flow is one million gallons per day, and they're required to design it three times that. So this is going to be designed to carry over three million gallons per day. The average flow is only going to be one million, and initially, the initial design flow, point three million gallons. Now, the urban service district is not going to develop overnight. It may take years to reach that. And in the interim, there's going to be far less flow in this ten miles of pipe than it is sized for. OHM points out that low flows in a pressurized system with a force main sized for ultimate heat capacity can result in settlement of solids in low points throughout the system. The system's not going to be flat, it's going to go under things, it's going to have low points. Solids settle in low points. Hydrogen sulfide gas becomes an issue with solids. Septic flow along the force main route is an issue based on the amount of time needed to displace sewage through ten miles of main. Now, to alleviate these problems requires flushing and perhaps pigging, the use of water. OHM points out there is no water supply along Gottfrithson Road in Superior Township. Where are they going to get the water? Well, they proposed, you've heard today, in Salem Township. This is where going to going to require approximately five hundred thousand gallons to flush. Well, at what frequency is this going to be required or done? And Salem has no DPW. They're going to have to contract this out to a third party to do it. Where are they located? How far from Salem? What's the response time? With such a large capacity of water required due to flushing, it's going to be expensive. Is the flushing going to be limited to non-peak times when Salem has to pay for the water? Solids forming in low points via intermittent flow increases the likelihood that the sewage becomes septic, increases the formation of hydrogen sulfide gas. That creates a risk of corrosion where there's iron, metallic, or concrete present in the system. Those are present in areas of release valves, bypass connections, manholes, and vault. Odor issues from air release valves are an issue. Now, odor is usually designed to vent into a concrete well structure. But if corrosion occurs, that requires maintenance and opening that structure. That requires disturbances along the route. OHM points out that such a large-size main with low-flow usage creates a public perception of sewer availability. Now, you're back into the utilities development cycle that McKenna pointed out. And the township, Salem Township, says that this it would be nearly impossible for anybody to connect into this pressurized force main. OHM states, "We would not agree that additional connections are nearly impossible. It is technically feasible that a development with a localized low-pressure sewer system or small pump station could connect to an existing force main, especially if considerable capacity were present in the force main." So it is not nearly impossible for someone else to connect to this system. Such requests for additional connections become attractive when operation and maintenance costs become extensive. Now, Salem has indicated they have a contract with YCUA, and they won't allow anybody else to connect. That contract, Paragraph seventeen point one three, provides that it can be amended at any time by Salem and Yucca. Directional drilling, when this is installed, will require staging pits along Gottfrithson Road every three hundred to five hundred feet. The way directional drilling is performed, they use a compound called bentonite to pump into the cavity. Slurry from bentonite drilling fluid requires pits along the route to allow the slurry to settle before being transported off flight. OHM says this will require disturbances for the slurry pits. It's also possible that slurry can escape under pressure along fissures and could flow into the adjacent environmentally sensitive areas. Now, the area of Gottfrithson Road, the north of the township, goes along a vast, open, wetland area. And I was hoping to screen share, but ultimately, I'm not able to do that at this point. The road gets extremely close to a very large, open, wetland area in your township. If bentonite were to escape, that would be an environmental problem. So OHM advises that there are significant construction, operation, and maintenance issues with this proposed system. OHM also advises that there are several feasible alternatives for Salem Township. Salem Township says connection to the Watuua Interceptor Joy Road in Hagerty, they can't do it. The first claim is it would require six miles of pavement removal, and there are a number of other competing utilities at that site. OHM points out that this is supposed to be a directional drill, so it shouldn't involve that much pavement removal. And the exact same challenges at Joy Road in Hagerty are going to be faced at the southern end of this proposed line in Ypsilanti Township when they want to connect to Yucca. At that southern terminus, they have to deal with an Amtrak rail, forty-two-inch Great Lakes Water Authority transition line, Ypsilanti drain crossing, eighty-four-inch pipe for the Byer Drain, seventy-eight-inch culvert for the Willow Run Drain, sixty-inch Yucca Force Main, and multiple high-pressure gas mains. There's a claim that to hook up to the Joy Road in Hagerty Interceptor would be double the cost. OHM asked Salem, what is the cost? And they didn't provide it to us. OHM doesn't believe it's going to be double the cost. Salem claims that because Watuua discharges into both Yucca and Wayne County, Salem would be subject to Wayne County consent agreements and the related sharing of costs. OHM states that Watuua no longer discharges into Wayne County, so this is no longer an issue. The existing Salem Hamlet wastewater treat planet treatment plant was considered also. Currently, they are allowed a monthly flow of seventy thousand gallons per day. Well, the average daily flow is only twenty thousand gallons, and during high-peak 2020 seasonal flow reached about fifty thousand. So there's some capacity there that exists currently. OHM reports that land space exists for future onsite expansion. It's a realization based on that. To handle wet weather peak flow events, upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant could reduce mass loading impact on Johnson Creek. That's a feasible option. Wastewater treatment plant could be developed at the urban service district. Now, the 2008 report from STANTEC noted that that was feasible. Remember, the ordinance provides that this has to be the only feasible way to avert a public health emergency. STANTEC initially said a wastewater treatment plant would be feasible, and I think we just heard today that they initially considered it in Bryan Simmons, but when they found out Yucca had capacity, they shifted over here to buckle. Now, I'm looking at the planned unit development contract between Salem Township and Salem Springs LLC. And this contract that was originally signed in two And this contract, that was originally signed in 2015, states, quote, "The township and the developer have agreed it would be feasible to develop the property by allocating part of the property or requiring an interest in land off-site for well and treatment plant purposes, to be used for the provision of water and sewer services for the property." So the actual contract between Salem Springs and Salem Township, they both have said in writing, "It would be feasible to develop a wastewater treatment plant onsite." That contract was amended in 2015, 2017, and 2018 with that very same language. Both parties agreeing it would be feasible to develop a plant at the urban service district. There is also an alternative regional option that OHM points out. There's a high-tech corridor development project in its preliminary stages to the east of Salem Township along Five Mile Road. This is an area where development is anticipated and desired. Salem Township could discharge its sewage to the east of Salem, to the existing Watuah Interceptor east of Ridge Road. Now, this would require Salem to accommodate its wet weather peak flow, but that could be achieved with an equalization basin in Salem Township. That alternative would reduce the force main length required from 10 miles to 3 miles, eliminate the flushing and cleaning in the water supply issues, decrease, eliminate the environmental impacts, and provide a regional solution consistent with the planning goals of a number of communities. So OHM's conclusion is no public health emergency exists. Other feasible alternatives exist, which are comparable or less costly than the proposed force main through Superior Township, which creates a number of construction, operation, maintenance issues that would be detrimental to Superior Township. So, members of the board, it's your decision to make, and you must act reasonably in doing so. Thank you so much.
Thank you, David. I will ask members of the Superior Township Board whether they have any questions at this Seeing none, that concludes the presentations that are being made today, and I'd just like to kind of summarize what I heard today, and then maybe ask for a motion to either approve the Salem Township application, deny it, or to table it to a future meeting. As we know, at Salem Township, following an application requesting authority from us, Superior Township, to run a sanitary sewer force main within the road right-of-way of Gottfriedson Road from Joy Road all the way to Geddes, and then Geddes to Ridge, at least seven miles. And that would connect to the wastewater treatment plant located in Ypsilanti Township, owned by Yucca. The proposed sanitary sewer force main would transport wastewater from currently a proposed residential development to Yucca. It appears to me that what I heard today is that the law provides that before one municipality can construct a sewer line through the rights-of-way of a second municipality, it must first obtain the consent of the second municipality, that being Superior. And we can deny it, but we can only deny it if we have reasonable grounds to do so. We can't be arbitrary or capricious in that decision. I think that I heard that there was case law that supported the standard that was set, that standard that was set forth, and that case law would be supportive of us denying it as long as we establish a basis today, that our actions are reasonable and non-arbitrary at this, at this point. So, consistent with that constitutional provision, and with the statute, and the case law that I heard, that we also have to consider our own township ordinance, our Utility Ordinance 169, which is an ordinance that was created to allow a neighboring community to transport their waste through our township, but only if a public health emergency exists. And the proposed connection, the sewer line, and all the pertinences, pump stations, and other engineering features, is the only feasible way to avert an existing public health emergency, and that we have agreed to how it's all going to operate through a written agreement. So we've heard today from Salem Township and their representatives, and Mr. Landry, who represented the information provided to us from Chris Duzan, from McKenna, and from our consulting attorneys, Orchid Spots and McLeimitt. And we've had this meeting today to consider this, and I hope that the board paid close attention to everything that was stated today. And at this time, I would ask, is there a board member that is prepared to make a motion to approve?
Ken, I would like to make a motion.
All right, Brenda, go ahead and state your motion.
I would like to make a motion to deny the application of Salem Township to run a sanitary sewer force main within the road right-of-ways from the northern boundary of Superior Township to the southern boundary of Superior Township for a proposed residential development in Salem Township to the Yucca wastewater treatment plant, is denied for the reason that the applicant has not established that it meets the criteria set forth in section 169-85 of Superior Township Ordinance 169, in particular because there is no public health emergency set forth in the attached report of OHM. That's number one. Number two, the proposed sewer line is not the only feasible way to avert a public health emergency, or the only feasible way to provide sewer services to Salem Township's urban service district, and its operations and maintenance issues posing threat, including but not limited to environmental risks to Superior Township as set forth in the attached report of OHM. And the existence of the proposed sanitary sewer force main creates a direct threat, and it is inconsistent with Superior Township's master plan goal of maintaining the land north of Geddes Road as ag, rural, open space as set forth in the attached report of McKenna.
Does that complete your motion?
That's complete.
Does anybody second that motion?
I'll second.
It's been seconded by Rhonda McGill. Are any, we got a motion and support on the table. Does anybody have any questions for anybody who has made a presentation today? Before we call the question? Speak now or forever hold your peace. All right, there are no questions. Lynette?
Looks like Bernice has a question there.
I do. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. I, I agree with Brenda. I did not hear what the public health emergency was. Could you be just a little clearer about what you believe that public health emergency is that exists?
Who are you asking the question to, Bernice?
That would be, I don't know if it's Mr. Plato?
Salem Township.
Salem. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. The, the public health emergency would be that we have a development going in with 554 homes that need to have sewage disposal treatment, and for all the reasons we have outlined, the only feasible way to do that is through constructing the sewer line to YCUA.
But, but that public housing doesn't exist yet. So what I was trying to listen to is, where is the existence right now of a public health emergency?
Well, because that development is well underway, has been, it has gone through the approval process.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Bernice. Is there any other board members that would like to ask a question of any of the consultants who have presented today? Seeing none, we have a motion to deny the application and support on the table. I'm calling the question. I'm going to ask Lynette to read the roll.
Yes.
Finley?
Yes.
Linky?
Can't hear you.
You're muted.
You're muted. You're muted. Okay, yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, Supervisor Schwartz.
All right, the motion has passed to deny the application of Salem Township. That concludes the business of the board, and we're going to go back into public comment, and my prior statements that I read regarding public comments applies to this also. Ben, are there any, anybody that wishes to make a comment at this time?
Russell Ryan.
All right, Mr. Ryan, you have the floor. Would you state your name and where you live, please?
Sure, yeah. My name's Russell Ryan. I'm 41 years old, and I live in downtown Ann Arbor. And I just, I want to speak very briefly about Superior Township and specifically the Gottfriedson Road area, and what they mean to me, so I am a relatively recent resident of the area. I've been an avid birder for much of my early life, and I resumed that over the past year and a half. So in the past 16 months, shortly after resuming that in early 2020, I discovered the, the area of around Gottfriedson Road in Superior Township, and I've actually, I've been back there 34 separate days. I've logged all my birding. So in the past 16 months, I've, I've been back there 34 times for a total of over 53 hours in Superior Township, and about half of that in Gottfriedson Road in the junction of Gottfriedson and Vreeland. It's a very special landscape that has species that can't be found anywhere else in Washtenaw County or the area, and several rare species such as short-eared owls. It's a place that my wife and I go, that is just, it's, it's unique, and it brings great enjoyment to us. And so I, I say this to, just to point out what a great value that area has beyond even the people who live in Superior Township, but really to the whole surrounding community as a recreation area. And so the idea of a major construction project that would disrupt Gottfriedson Road, sorry, not sure what that is, would, would, you know, would ruin that enjoyment for me and for many others. And so I, I oppose this sewer project, both for the immediate impact that the construction would have, and the potential for destroying this important landscape, for, for all the reasons that people in the community love it, and people in the surrounding community love it. So, so thank you for hearing my statement.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ryan. Ben, is there anybody else who wishes to comment?
Mr. Zelis again.
David, you have the floor for three minutes.
Okay, just a couple more things that I wanted to add regarding what I'd written down. First off, it should not be our problem to deal with the expensive political fallout of the situation. I would advocate for concerned citizens to bind together and seek class-action legal compensation from the developer and those trying to force this through if it does go through. I would also like to encourage Salem Township and its representatives and the developer to seek maybe an alternate to this situation. First off, you know, an observation, if Eagle says that onsite wastewater treatment is not an option, then why was this inability to build an onsite facility the cause of an expensive lawsuit and legal judgment against Salem Township in the first place? Revisit that situation. It seems like rhetorical moot point, and it seems like perhaps all the damages and judgment awarded in the original lawsuit should be thrown out if that's the case. Number two, if Canton Township needs more capacity, then why doesn't maybe Salem Township look at running the sewer, taking a corner at the, taking a turn at the corner of Gottfriedson and Joy, and going east, and then heading over to Canton Township, and then running the line there, and they might not have, and Salem wouldn't have to pay as far a distance to go with the sewer at that point, hooking up with Canton Township, and then running it through Canton Township to Yucca. That's another alternative. You know, if, if the developer decides to pursue and utilize an alternative sewer arrangement where it will not pass through or serve as Superior Township, I wish him well and much success with his endeavors. However, if he tries to come through Superior Township, we, the citizens, will fight it tooth and nail, and you will find yourselves in a very expensive political situation. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, David. Ben, is there anybody else who wishes to comment?
Mr. Gardner.
Mr. Gardner, you have the floor. Would you state your name and where you live, please?
My name is Jay Gardner. I live in Superior Township. I am the vice chair of the Planning Commission in Superior Township. I don't know whether it's appropriate while I can pose this question to Mr. Plato, but if I can't, I'd just like to pose the comment. What, I certainly support the action that the board has just taken in denying this permit application. The question that comes to my mind, and I don't have a lot of the background, is why the developer, as Mr. Plato just stated, went ahead and has gone through the approval process. I'm not sure how far along the developer is, but why has the developer taken this risk without having this key question resolved? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Ben, is there anybody else?
Mr. Smiley?
Mr. Smiley, you have the floor. Would you state your name and where you live for the record, please?
Thank you. My name is Jack Smiley. I live on Cherry Hill Road in Superior Township. First off, I would like to thank the board for their vote. It was clear that there is indeed no public health emergency here. It seems like the Salem Township and the developer are just trying to create one. One of the things they need to do is look at all options, not just options to create different sewer routes or create different sewer options. I think one of the biggest options they need to look at is changing Salem Township's master plan to delete this urban service district. It's wrong for Salem Township to promote economic development that is detrimental to other communities. There are thousands of acres within the urban service district that could be developed. This would be damaging not just to Superior Township, it would damage Plymouth Township, it would damage Washtenaw County, and many other communities. And I'm sure the citizens of Salem Township would welcome protecting more open space and not having a massive urban-type development at Gottfriedson and M14. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smiley. Ben, is there anyone else? Bill again? Bill?
Yeah, hi, Bill Shakora from Great Hawk Circle in Superior Township. Just want to comment on the, the report from HRC. And, and this kind of relates to the ordinance, the Superior Township ordinance that looks at, you know, are there other feasible alternatives? HRC looked at, I think, Lion Township, Plymouth Township, WTUA, and YCUA, but I think did not look at what used to be called Detroit Water and Sewer Department, now called Great Lakes Water Authority. And as I mentioned earlier, I know there's a sewer main that connects, that used to connect from WTUA to the Great Lakes Water Authority. Kurt Heiss mentioned that, you know, they, WTUA, knowing has the ability to switch from Yakua to Detroit, but my guess is that sewer main is still there. And it's just like, it's about eight miles from the proposed development to WTUA, it's about eight miles, as it crawls, from the proposed development to Yakua. And... And I don't, you know, if a force main is twice as much, according to the township's lawyer, you know, again, that, that seems feasible to me. If you can get it to the location, the area of WTUA, and connect to the sewer main that I think is there for the Great Lakes Water Authority, that seems like a feasible option to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Shakora. Uh, Ben, is there anyone else who'd like to comment?
There's nobody else, Mr. Supervisor.
All right, then I'll pull, close public comment for the second public comment, and that concludes our business today. I wanted to thank everybody for attending, including Salem Township and Mr. Landry, our consultants who are on standby. And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved. Support.
We've been supported. Any questions on that? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. This meeting is adjourned. Ben, you can turn us off now.